Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. It is June 2nd at 5:30.
Could you call my number, please?
Sure.
There you go. I apologize, miss.
Okay. Can you, can everyone hear me? Okay, all right. Ms. Adams, would you please call the roll?
Lisa Eastus.
Here.
David Wortman.
Here.
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Bullier.
Here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Jeanette Nichols.
(coughs)
Bill Ridenmark.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic forward stands under God.
I would ask that we take a moment to reflect on the tragic events and the turmoil that has swept across our nation recently. In recent times, we have been living behind walls. This is a time when those walls need to come down, even if only virtually, not be reinforced. We need to be in unity instead of experiencing greater separation. Please join in a moment of reflection now. We're on item number two, closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session, excuse me, pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 11A, 1, 3, and 6, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to consider personnel matters, and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and 321?
Move for closed session pursuant to the statutes. Mr. Bullier?
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second?
Stephanie Adams, second.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice? Ms. Justice? Ms. Nichols? Is Ms. Nichols on with us?
She is on.
Ms. Nichols, how do you vote? Mr. Ridenmark?
Yea.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Ms. Justice? Is she on mute?
(inaudible).
Okay. Ms. Nichols? All right, well, we have a quorum, so we are now in closed session. Thank you. You good? Okay. All right. We are back in open session. And we are on item number three, approval of the agenda, and that we are making some pretty big changes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, in the interest of time, in order to conclude the meeting this evening at 8:15, so that we can comply with the curfew for New Hanover County and Wilmington that begins at 9:00 PM, I'm going to ask that, under Information, item eight, that B, English as a Second Language Services Presentation be pulled. We'll bring that back at the interim meeting. And then, under New Business, item 14, that C, Year-End Budget Amendment Resolution be moved to the end. As we work through the items, once we reach 8:15, we'll need to move to close that particular item and adjourn the meeting. There are a number of important matters that we do need to address, and I believe we'll have time to do that. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would offer those adjustments to the agenda.
No, you said item D, Year-End Budget. I have, that's item C.
I'm sorry. I may have a different sheet. Let me look at it again. Yes, item D, Year-End Budget Amendment Resolution goes to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Excuse me, the end of New Business.
Okay.
Ms. Eastus?
Yes, sir.
I missed the closed session. I heard everything y'all said, but I could not say anything, but y'all can hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm back. All right.
All right, great. All right. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
All right, you all have heard the suggested changes. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve this amended?
All right.
Second.
Mr. Bullier?
Mr. Bullier made the motion. Mr. Ridenmark is the second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
(laughing).
We'll come back to you, Mr. Ridenmark.
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols was an aye, and...
Aye.
Yep, an a am an aye. Seven, nothing to approve the amended agenda. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have special meeting minutes. Let's see. Okay, we've got a bunch of minutes. So, are the, unless there are any changes, Ms. Stagner, is it okay if we do this as a group?
Yes, you could just identify in the motion which minutes are being approved, and they could be approved with one motion.
Okay. So, unless there are any objections, is there a motion to approve the, well, does someone want to make the motion? I can say it. Special meeting minutes from December 10th, 2019, special meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 4th, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 15th, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 18th, 2020, at 2:00 PM, special meeting minutes from February 18th, 2020, at 5:30 PM, special meeting minutes from February 25th, 2020, special meeting minutes from May 4th, and special meeting minutes from May 5th.
Move to approve the minutes listed.
Motion for Mr. Bullier, is there a second?
Second.
Is that a second for Ms. Justice?
Yes, Ms. Justice.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Come on, Jeanette.
We'll come back to you, Mr. Ridenmark.
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols was an aye, and...
Aye.
Yep, an a am an aye. Seven, nothing to approve the amended agenda. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have special meeting minutes. Let's see. Okay, we've got a bunch of minutes. So, are the, unless there are any changes, Ms. Stagner, is it okay if we do this as a group?
Yes, you could just identify in the motion which minutes are being approved, and they could be approved with one motion.
Okay. So, unless there are any objections, is there a motion to approve the, well, does someone want to make the motion? I can say it. Special meeting minutes from December 10th, 2019, special meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 4th, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 15th, 2020, special meeting minutes from February 18th, 2020, at 2:00 PM, special meeting minutes from February 18th, 2020, at 5:30 PM, special meeting minutes from February 25th, 2020, special meeting minutes from May 4th, and special meeting minutes from May 5th.
Move to approve the minutes listed.
Motion for Mr. Bullier, is there a second?
Second.
Is that a second for Ms. Justice?
Yes, Ms. Justice.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Ridenmark?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
An a vote, aye. Passes seven, nothing. Thank you, Ms. Adams, for all those minutes. Moving on to recognition of achievements, and I'm not sure who's presenting this.
Madam Chair, I will present this evening. The following are the organizations, schools, teachers, and students who we feel honored to recognize this evening. The New Hanover County Board of Education Student Scholarships for future teachers, the Community Partner YMCA, the School Showcases Murray Middle School, National Board Certified Teachers, the Gatorade North Carolina Women's Basketball Player of the Year, the New Hanover County Schools Rookie of the Year, North Carolina Central University African-American Male Initiative recipient, and the Corning STEM Educator of the Year. We have a video to present. Could we please share that?
Over 15,000 folks each year in total. And be their best selves. This evening, we would like... The district is pleased to continue board recognitions. Despite current circumstances and limitations, district students and staff continue to rise above and be their best selves. This evening, we would like to highlight those educators and students who were to be honored prior to COVID-19. Before we get into those recognitions, we would like to highlight a community partner who has been instrumental in assisting and working with the district in the midst of this crisis.
Good afternoon, my name is Sarah Gibbs, and I am here to talk with you a little bit more about the YMCA of southeastern North Carolina. Thank you for having us today, and thank you for taking a little bit of time to learn more about our organization and our partnership with New Hanover County Schools. Our Y was founded in 1887, and we have been serving the greater Wilmington community for 133 years now. Nationally, the Y is one of the largest membership organizations that people come to. We are one of the largest providers of childcare, youth sports, aquatics, camping, health and fitness, and parent-child programs. We're also one of the largest operators of swimming pools. And over the last 10 years, Y's across the nation have launched a series of evidence-based health initiatives to help prevent or manage chronic disease like diabetes, high blood pressure, and child obesity. The Y is an inclusive nonprofit organization made up of men, women, and children, joined together by a shared commitment to nurture the potential of kids, promote healthy living, and foster a sense of social responsibility. Our mission is to put Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind, and body for all. The Y has three areas of focus, including youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and every one of our programs and services fall under one of these three categories to support the children in our community, the well-being of our community, and supporting one another through social responsibility. Today, our YMCA Association includes two membership facilities, the Near Family Y and the Midtown YMCA, both located in New Hanover County, as well as an activity center up in Ogden. The Ogden YMCA Activity Center was just opened up at the beginning of this year, and it was in the same facility that's previously known as the Wilmington Basketball Center. Additionally, we also have a residential camp up in Waffa, North Carolina, known as YMCA Camp Kirkwood, and our association operates two indoor pools at our Near Family YMCA, as well as four outdoor pools, which include the three city pools in Wilmington, as well as a pool out in Whiteville, North Carolina. Our programs and services are provided in nine counties throughout southeastern North Carolina. This includes our summer camp and after-school programs, some of our youth sports programs like soccer and girls on the run and stride running programs, as well as some of these community health initiatives like diabetes prevention, moving for better balance, and blood pressure self-monitoring. Today, we have over 10,000 active YMCA members and over 5,000 program participants totaling. We serve about over 15,000 folks each year in total. Here is a quick snapshot of all or some of the programs that we offer in different areas. We are a community-focused organization, and so our programs and services adjust to meet our community needs. Each year, our annual, through our annual campaign, we're able to provide more than $450,000 in program and membership scholarships. And to give you an idea on kind of the impact that makes, one in five of our kids in summer camp or after-school care programs receive financial assistance so that they too can be a part of the Y. As you can see, we have a number of community outreach programs, like Live Strong at the YMCA, diabetes prevention, leadership through aquatics, and so on. These are all programs that are provided to the community for low cost or no cost, and they are in response to a need that we have seen in our community. Lastly, we have a lot of community partnership, including the PALS, the Police Activities Leagues. We've got a refugee soccer program, and our after-school program runs in partnership with New Hanover County Schools. Many of our programs, including all of our community health programs, are open to the community and not just members. So, a lot of these programs are available to everyone rather than just members. As I said before, the Y is constantly listening and responding to the needs in our community, and with the start of COVID-19, we have been able to pivot our focus on some of these other initiatives to better meet the current needs of our community. One of these initiatives is food distribution. We've partnered with New Hanover County Schools the last few months to use our buses in delivering about 1,000 meals each day to children without transportation. To date, we've delivered over 43,000 meals to children in New Hanover County. This is a partnership we are very proud of, and we're really excited to be working with you all and appreciate all that you guys are doing for our community, so thank you, and thank you for letting us be a part of it. It's meaningful to our staff, and we are, we are excited to continue serving the kids in our community throughout this pandemic. Additionally, we've partnered with New Hanover County Senior Center to serve as a pickup site for senior meals. To date, we have served more than 1,000 meals to seniors in our community. Additionally, shortly after schools closed, we began providing essential childcare for essential workers. To date, we have served about 85 families in our childcare programs since schools have closed. We've also begun making calls to some of our senior members to make sure that they have what they need during this time, running a few errands and making sure that everyone stays active and connective through social distancing. Lastly, our staff has offered a number of virtual exercise classes to help keep members and participants connective and active during this time. We continue to expand on these virtual group exercise classes and wellness programs in the coming weeks as well. Lastly, in looking at our partners... With New Hanover County Schools, we have been providing after-school care in partnership with the New Hanover County Schools for the, for quite some time now. Today, we have four sites in, in four different schools, including Castle Hain, Wrightsville Beach, Parsley, and Porter's Neck Elementary Schools. Additionally, the Y has three after-school care sites in our own branches, and these sites pick up from 27 different schools in New Hanover County and drop off at our YMCA branches. We've also been offering youth and government programming at New Hanover County High School, something we'd love to see expand as well in the coming years. And recently, we've started to make sure that we have a number, a few New Hanover County School employees serving on our advisory boards. We really appreciate their leadership and guidance so that we continue serving youth in our community through our own resources and programming. Lastly, just some areas that we'd love to, to expand on with our partnership with New Hanover County Schools. We would love to see additional onsite after-school care programs in some of the schools throughout New Hanover County. That's always been a goal of ours, is to see even more of that and have more schools providing after-school care and before-school care through the Y. And we'd also love to work with New Hanover County Schools to provide swim lessons to every child in our community. This is something that the Y has always been passionate about. Aquatics is one of those programs that we feel is very important. Water safety and swim lessons, and being in such an aquatic environment, we would love to see that every child has access to swim lessons in our community. And that is the end of our presentation. Thank you so much for learning more about the YMCA and our partnership with the school. We appreciate all that you guys do for our community and hope to continue working with you all in the coming years and doing even more with you guys.
Our next recognition takes us to Murray Middle School, home of the Falcons. To continue with the district school showcases, Mr. Philip Sutton, Principal of Murray Middle School, will give us a glimpse into Falcon life.
At Murray, we've got a motto that we're F3, Falcons-focused. And we do, we want students to be focused on the future for high school and beyond. And, and we've got four core values that we are, we try to teach, we try to instill every single day, and that's being responsible, resourceful, receptive, and respectful. And you'll see those words throughout our building. And we truly do, we want our students to live those things out every single day. We want them to be responsible with their behavior, with their time management, with their life skills. We want them to be good citizens. We also want them to be resourceful problem solvers. And we do that through our STEM program that's integrated throughout, but also with our athletics, with our arts. We've got an incredible arts program. We're, we've got musicals and performances, and everybody's involved in those things. We're also excited about a new NC Green Power Grant initiative that's going to bring three kilowatt solar panels to Murray, that we're going to be able to teach responsibility and resourcefulness with solar energy as a, as a teaching tool. But we also want our students to be receptive and respectful to each other, and we're trying to do that through our I's initiative, which is a empowering youth, engaging schools initiative that we're in collaboration with four other middle schools in the district to teach our students to combat bullying and harassment through, through empathy. So, at Murray, we do, we've got a 2020 vision for impacting our community through, through service and developing teamwork here at Murray.
We are Murray! We have a 2020 vision!
I transferred here like two months ago, and everybody's very accepting.
I always change how I look and how, and look very odd, but people seem to still be inclusive to me.
I don't exactly do the same things that everyone else does, but people still accept me for what I am.
We are artistic!
Things I love about orchestra are how we all work together and help each other with our instruments.
Things that I love about how I'm able to express myself in a way.
Things I also love about orchestra is how I'm able to express how I'm feeling inside of the different pieces I play and how we all work together, and we're like a big family.
Things that I love about band is that everybody works together, and a lot of people are friends and stuff.
I like chords because we're all a big family, and we can tell each other anything we want, and we can just be who we are with our friends.
I play basketball because of the teamwork.
I play sports at Murray because it teaches us good sportsmanship and brings everyone together.
I like playing sports at Murray because it brings us, us together as a family.
I like playing sports at Murray because of the fierce mentality.
I like playing sports at Murray because of the great spirit we have.
Because we all work together.
And each and every one of the teachers care about each and every one of the students.
At Murray Middle School, we are a community.
I like to help my friends when they need help because that's what my school taught me to do.
I love to hang out with my friends and play around.
With all the extracurricular activities, there's no end to what you can do to help out.
I like learning about systems of equations.
I like learning about the environment.
I like learning about the digestive system.
We are learners!
We are learners!
We are Murray!
I am 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 Murray!
We are Murray!
I am Murray!
I am Murray!
During National Women's History Month in March, Women in STEM was featured on Diversity Matters, a district-produced segment on NHCSTV. Participants included GE engineers and UNCW STEM educators. Among those guests, the show also featured Ashley High School's science teacher, Ms. Gwendolyn Abraham. In addition to being a remarkable and pioneering teacher at Ashley High School, Ms. Abraham was also selected as Corning STEM Educator of the Year. While on Diversity Matters, Ms. Abraham talks about what the award means to her and how she pioneered STEM at Ashley. Ms. Abraham, we were talking earlier and you were just awarded and named the Corning STEM Educator of the Year. You actually have the banquet tonight. Tell me what that was like finding out that you won and what that means to you.
It was exciting. The application went in in the fall and I found out a couple of weeks ago that I was awarded that. I was really grateful. I've worked hard, I think, and I do a lot of things. I do teach, I do the Science Olympiad. This year, I've also started an online forensics course. We started five years ago with a forensics course here in New Hanover County, which was just at Ashley High School. And that has grown into a well-loved class at my high school. We range from about 60 to 80 students a year.
Oh, wow!
And then, starting in this semester, I created an online course. So I've just started that, I'm just in the first four weeks of that class. And then I also teach summer ventures, which is through the School of Science and Math. It's a four-week residential program at UNCW. And I work with Dr. Midori Albert there, teaching forensics. So, and that brings kids from all over the state into our area, all different, boy, girl, all different ethnic backgrounds. Again, to provide these students opportunities to participate in different types of science where they maybe, leading up to high school, really didn't find something that they might have been interested in. But once they, you know, maybe take a chemistry class with me and I can say, "Well, hey, you're doing great in chemistry. I see that you're liking this, why don't you try forensics the next year?" And it really sparks interest and kids can kind of see a little bit further down the road as maybe a type of job or career they might want. So I'm starting to see that happen now, especially with the forensics kids, branching off into different areas, not just biology or not just chemistry, but being creative in what they might have plans for in the future.
Our next recognition goes to Ashley High School basketball phenom, Sanaya Rivers. For the second year in a row, Ms. Rivers has been named North Carolina Gatorade Player of the Year. The award, which recognizes not only outstanding athletic excellence, but also high standards of academic achievement and exemplary character demonstrated on and off the court, distinguishes Rivers as North Carolina's best high school girls' basketball player. Rivers averaged 25 points, 11.8 rebounds, 6.4 steals, and 4.3 assists through 29 games. Mid Eastern Conference Player of the Year, Rivers is a two-time All-State selection and is ranked as the nation's number-three recruit in the Class of 2021 by ESPN, and she maintains a 3.25 GPA. Congratulations on the honor of being named twice, Sanaya. Thanks to a partnership with the Wilmington Rotary, we are able to bring you the next recognition. The Rookie of the Year Award recognizes teachers who have demonstrated excellence in the first three years of their teaching career. The award was created to honor and recognize the efforts of beginning teachers. This year, we congratulate Sidney Peterson, kindergarten teacher at Forest Hills Global Elementary School, for being named Rookie of the Year.
I'm so appreciative that they're recognizing teachers so early on in our career that we're not forgotten. And, you know, we feel valued, we feel heard, we feel recognized, and it's truly an amazing thing. And I'm so thankful that they do this for us. My whole life, this has been my dream. And so I think just being able to make a difference every day, I go home and I put my head on the pillow. I just feel like I'm making a difference and helping to shape, you know, our future and to be there for the students who really need it.
The district at this time would like to recognize Nigel Thomas, a senior at New Hanover High School. Nigel is one of 40 incoming freshmen at North Carolina Central University to be selected to the African-American Male Initiative, a program dedicated to helping more African-American men pursue higher education, graduate, and go on to start their careers. This year, 23 New Hanover County Schools educators have achieved National Board Certification and 33 additional educators renewed their certifications. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It is the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. Congratulations to the following educators for achieving National Board Certification during the 2019-2020 school year.
Lauren Applewhite from Parsley Elementary, teaching for 12 years. Meredith Collins, Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, teaching for 15 years. Buffy Constantine, Blair Elementary, teaching for 18 years. Leah Cresswell, Winter Park Elementary, teaching for 17 years. Clary French, Sykes Academy of Arts and Design, teaching for 18 years. Sherry Green, Wrightsville Beach Elementary, teaching for 32 years. Sheila Hardison, teaching for 27 years. She's at Anderson Elementary. Kimberly Howser, Edwin A. Anderson Elementary, teaching for 16 years. Over at Eaton Elementary, Carly Kessler, teaching for 16 years. Samantha Keller, Wrightsville Elementary, teaching for eight years. Tammy Key, Bellamy Elementary, teaching for 26 years. Alyssa Langley, Wrightsville Elementary, teaching for nine years. Katie Leonard, Trask Middle School, teaching for five years. Allison Linkner, Castle Hain Elementary, teaching for 24 years. Kylie Marshalk, New Hanover High School, teaching for 10 years. Will McKibben, Roland Grice Middle, teaching for eight years. Elaine McLintyre, from Anderson Elementary, teaching for 20 years. Lisa MacIver, Noble Middle, teaching for 16 years. Jessica Moore, Winter Park Elementary, teaching for 22 years. Marissa Preston Neely, Winter Park Elementary, teaching for 17 years. Jordan Gilmore Owens, Parsley Elementary, teaching for eight years. Nan Powell, Blair Elementary, teaching for 25 years. Melanie Ryan, Title I Supervisor, teaching for 20 years. Crystal Saporito, Wrightsville Beach Elementary, teaching for 11 years. Taylor Seko, Sunset Park, teaching for five years. Lacey Summack, Parsley Elementary, teaching for 13 years. Kimberly Thompson, Wrightsville Beach Elementary. Lucy Wilcox, Parsley Elementary School, teaching for the past eight years. Lisa Causey, Eaton Elementary School, teaching for 23 years. Carrie Elliott, Holly Tree Elementary, teaching for nine years. Crystal Urey, 21 years, teaching Eaton Elementary. Candace Hart, teaching for 17 years, Parsley Elementary School. Kristi Howe, Bradley Creek Elementary School, teaching for 20 years. Crystal Shook, Murray Middle School, teaching for 13 years. Stephanie Titzel, Roland Grice Middle School, teaching for 14 years. Erin Watson, Bellamy Elementary School, teaching for 10 years. And Andy Webb, Forest Hills Global Elementary School, teaching for 21 years. Not Picture, Mary Barnes, New Hanover High School. Travis Beatty, Ashley High School. Sarah Butcher, Hogard High. Richard Cameron, Bellamy Elementary. Corbin Clay, New Hanover High. Andrew Crew, Williston Middle. Chris Garner, Hogard High School. Catherine Harkeema, Holly Tree Elementary. Lawrence Herrick, Lake Forest Academy. Leslie Jernigan, Pine Valley Elementary School. Rachel Kirk, Hollis Shelter Middle School. Megan LeBeau, New Hanover High. Cynthia Low Liberty, Wrightsville Elementary. Lisa Miskich, Ogden Elementary. Jennifer Solaway, Castle Hain Elementary. Denise Summerlin, Murray Middle. Crystal Williams, Williston Middle.
All right. For the next part of the recognition, I would ask that the board allow a slight adjustment to the agenda. And I would like to move Item A under New Business up. So if we could go to Item A under New Business, which is the New Hanover County Board of Education Student Scholarships for Future Teachers. Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes, you will.
Okay. So if someone would please make a motion to move that item up on the agenda.
Move to amend?
Is that Mr. Bullier?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion for Mr. Bullier, is there a second?
Second, Mrs. Nichols.
There's a second for Miss Nichols. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Miss Justice?
Aye.
Miss Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reibenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. For the past, leave us now, Miss Nichols, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's been five years?
Yes.
That the board has offered these, awarded these scholarships, board scholarships, in the amount of $7,000, $3,500 per semester to four students. It's something that the board has been very excited about and proud of every year. It is a fairly rigorous process for both the board and the students. And we went through this process this year. Thanks to the efforts of Miss Adams, we had a very large pool, much larger than normal, and we were very grateful for it. It was, again, as I said, a very challenging process, but we did get to four students. And the recommendation is to award the following students, the New Hanover County Board of Education Student Scholarships for Future Teachers. The students are Emma Brinkley, Elmer Rodriguez-Fuentes, Kennedy Martin, and Kelsey McCray. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move for approval.
There's a motion for Miss Nichols, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bullier.
Second for Mr. Bullier.
Second.
Miss Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Miss Justice?
Aye.
Miss Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reibenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is a 7-0 vote. Congratulations to the students. And I do believe, Miss Adams, that we do have the students on virtually with us, so we can say congratulations. All right. So do we have Miss Emma Brinkley?
Yes, yes.
All right. Welcome. Mr. Elmer Rodriguez-Fuentes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great. Kennedy Martin, Miss Kennedy Martin?
I don't see Kennedy.
Not yet, okay. All right. And then Kelsey McCray, Miss Kelsey McCray?
Hello, yes.
Then they all, everyone just disappeared.
Back!
There we go. All right. Well, welcome, students. Hopefully, Miss Martin will be able to join us in a minute, is she coming? No, okay. All right, well, I want to say thank you for joining us virtually. And again, congratulations on the scholarships. Everyone here would like to give you a hand, so thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations to every one of you. It was a tough pick. It was a, the crowd that was in the pool this year was tough. And for y'all to come out of this, you did a great job. Congratulations to every one of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We know you'll make us proud, thank you, guys.
We are so excited to have you come back to us in New Hanover County Schools after graduation. And your future students will be so, so lucky to have you. So congratulations, wonderful job. It's been a pleasure getting to meet all of you.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing to the four of you. If anybody ever asks you ever again, after your first or fifth or 10th year, what you would want your peers to say about you, I want you to say, "I want them to think that I was significant and I made a difference." Okay?
Okay.
All right. See you, guys.
Bye, so proud of you, all of you.
Yep, you are all very, very impressive. And we know that you're going to be doing great things, both in school and when you get back here to New Hanover County. Did we ever get Miss Martin?
I'm sorry?
Did we ever get Miss Martin on the line?
I'm not sure she was there or not.
Okay, all right.
She was there, but I don't know, she clicked off.
Okay. Well, hopefully, she heard the congratulations. All right. And I believe that concludes our recognition. We ended on a high note. Oh, and I forgot to mention that they have plaques and trophies awaiting them, which we will get to all of the students.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So, moving on to Item Six, Call to the Audience. We have had, oops. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community, which obviously, right now, cannot happen. During the regular remote board meetings, the call to the audience signup process will be the same, but the comments will be submitted via audio recording. Comments can be submitted beginning the day before a regular remote board meeting up to noon on the day of the meeting. Due to volume, comments are restricted to three minutes. We have had two individuals sign up. The first individual is Claire Wadsworth.
Good evening. I'm Claire Wadsworth, and I'm the parent of three daughters, one eighth grader graduating from Roland Grice and two seniors graduating from Hogard. When my oldest daughter Laura was in elementary and middle school, I spent four years serving on the New Hanover County School Board's EC Advisory Council, ACES. She has cerebral palsy and autism and is one of my two seniors that are supposed to graduate this year, along with her slightly younger sister Lydia. Having spent those four years involved with the school board, I know all too well that much of the time, you have a thankless and tough job. I appreciate you all and thank you for your service to our school community. I'm reaching out to you and hope you will vote yes tonight to allow our graduating seniors to have a safe, traditional, in-person graduation. These graduations can be held outside with each senior having a minimum of two guests with mask and social distancing requirements in place. I'm sure parents and seniors alike would be more than willing to sign a liability waiver if they choose to attend such an event, if that is something the board deems necessary. Those who choose not to attend can watch a live stream of the graduation online. It's a win-win for all. Many counties in our state are already doing this for their seniors. In Governor Cooper's Executive Order 141, educational institutions are exempt from the mask gathering requirement. Governor Cooper had the opportunity- Governor Cooper had the opportunity to include specific and clear language that would not require graduations to follow this. He didn't do that, and he left the door open with that Executive Order 141, and he left it as-is. He simply added a recommendation to follow an old Phase 1 guideline from BPI that was issued on May 1. The governor left these decisions to the local school boards. It's my understanding that the graduation task force was instructed to apply the mass gathering rule. I hope you'll consider asking the task force, if they were not bound by this mass gathering interpretation of the order, what would they want graduation to look like? You have a chance to be a hero for these seniors tonight, and give them a gift of a lifetime, a memory they will cherish forever. A show of unity is exactly what our community needs right now, and what a better place to do that than a celebratory graduation ceremony full of seniors that represent all races, genders, cultures, and abilities. They are our futures and the next generation of voters. The message we can send our graduates before they spread their wings and fly off into the world can be a powerful one. I know none of you have high school seniors this year, but imagine this year being the year your son or daughter was supposed to graduate. You would move mountains to make it safely happen. As our elected school board members, these seniors are your children, too. Please don't let them down, and I thank you for your consideration in this matter.
The next speaker is Emily Hutchinson.
Hello. My name is Emily Hutchinson, and I am a senior at New Hanover High School. I leave this message today to ask, please don't take graduation away from us. This has been a tough time for many reasons, besides the fact that our senior year was cut short. We need some hope and positivity right now. A graduation is a way to say goodbye to 12 years of hard work that we just did. I promise you, a graduation with safety precautions is safer than most things that are happening in the community right now. Please don't take this away. We can safely do this. Thank you.
And that concludes our call to the audience. Item seven, Head Start Liaison Report. Mr. Boyer? Mr. Boyer?
Is that better?
Yep. That's better.
Ah, yes. Madam Chair, I will, board members, I will do my best to be brief this evening. This is the end of our fiscal year, so I can briefly share with you our budget items, but then there is a matter that I want to bring to your attention, and I will go ahead and read that. So first, if we could begin with our budget amendment. Again, you can see from the appendix that we are at the end of our fiscal year, we have met all of our expenditure requirements, and we are agreed, no doubt, thanks to the work, again, of Ms. Miles and her team. This past June, in 2019, many of you, or a year ago, many of you will remember an incident in one of our pre-K centers where a child was left on a bus. In October, another incident resulted in our pre-K department being flagged by the state of North Carolina for safety violations. That incident was a child being dropped off to an incorrect guardian. So the state wanted to take a look at our operations to make sure that we were in compliance with all safety requirements, and we were. Ms. Miles put into place some corrective measures. The state deemed those measures sufficient, and we have our five-star licenses renewed, so that is a really positive step. And I will just read for you the issues that we have with the federal government, because they came in after. The Administration for Children's and Families, ACF, Office of Head Start, OHS, has recently notified us that they have conducted a monitoring review of the Head Start program due to receiving a Notice of Administration action letter from the Division of Child Development and Early Education, North Carolina's Child Care Licensing Division. During this monitoring visit, it was determined incidents were health and safety concern with the children and are identified as deficiencies. In addition, the monitoring team identified a noncompliance in reporting this Notice of Administration letter to the program specialist at the regional floor office, and I will address that momentarily. A school-level corrective action plan was completed, included change of policies and supervision. DCDE, State Child Care Licensing, has concluded their investigation, and Johnson Pre-K Center received a five-star license. The state has finished their investigation. Now, we are required to provide a corrective action plan with the federal government for Head Start. Next steps are to create a Head Start Quality Improvement Plan to provide the federal program with new evidence of meeting Head Start performance standards. This plan is due to the Regional Floor Office by June 5 of 2020, and completion of implementation of this plan is due by September 7, 2020. Director will be working closely with building administrators, Head Start Board Liaison, senior leaders, and district-level early childhood teams to build and implement this plan for improvement. Information will be shared as soon as it becomes available. The Notice of Administration letter, we were noncompliant with that notice. We did not respond in time. Now, the reasons for this are several. The notice did not come to the address that it was designated to come to. Instead, it came to our central office. This was at the end of February, I believe, February 27. We were required, Ms. Miles received it on February 27, we were required to respond by February 25. As soon as Ms. Miles received notification, she replied, and, you know, it was just one of those things. I don't know exactly how it got lost, but, you know, we really need to do our best to bring these, bring this Head Start program, make sure their policies and procedures are embedded into the policies and procedures of New Hanover County. We serve 863 students in pre-K. So we always talk about K through 12, but really, we're pre-K, A through 12, and I'm guilty of it, just like anybody else. But these are our kids, you know, they're coming back to us, the two kids who had the incident, they're coming back to us. So, you know, moving forward, and, you know, we've seen great improvements already, we just need to continue to work as a team. So I thank the board for giving me that moment, and Ms. Miles is available to answer any questions on this.
I'd like to know.
Are there any questions? Thank you for that summary, Mr. Boyer. Item eight, information. So there are no, there's nothing to, we don't need any votes on anything. Is that correct, Mr. Boyer?
Correct.
No, this is just for information. We don't need any votes. I think it's 45 days after the August deadline for implementation. We will get a review from the federal government, and hopefully, everything will be good to go. I'll provide an update at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Item eight, information, policies for first readings. Ms. Nichols?
We have two policies tonight for first reading. The first one, I'm going to ask you to think about, and we need to waive first reading. It is policy 2302, remote participation in meetings. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Sagner if she will explain this to us before we move to approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. This is, the policy committee considered a remote meetings policy, and then there was legislation that was passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor to address remote meetings in case of an emergency, a state of emergency such as we're currently experiencing. Do my video. And so, the School Boards Association revised and made some updates to incorporate the new statutes that address remote meetings, and so, those have been incorporated in this policy. The board has already been doing what is required under the statute. I have advised the board of the requirements, things such as taking the roll call vote, et cetera. But this policy would not only remote meetings in cases of a state of emergency like we have now, but also remote participation in board meetings as a matter of necessity, if a board member has to do that outside of this unusual circumstance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
If we have no questions, Madam Chair, can we get a motion to waive first reading and approve this policy?
Move to waive first reading. Mr. Boyer?
There's a motion for Mr. Boyer to waive first reading. Is there a second?
Bill Reibenberg, second.
Second for Mr. Reibenberg. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reibenberg? Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Mr. Reibenberg?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and seven-nothing to waive first reading. And now, is there a motion to approve the policy number 2302?
Move to approve. Mr. Boyer?
Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reibenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So it's seven-nothing to approve policy 2302.
Thank you. The second policy for your information tonight is 2500, hearing before the board, and again, I'm going to ask Mrs. Sagner if she will review this with us.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. This is a, again, a policy revision that's recommended by the School Boards Association. The board already has authority to have hearing panels for certain hearings rather than the full board hearing. Again, in this time where some remote hearings may be necessary or required, it may be easier to get two board members together rather than the full board if the board chair decided to appoint a panel. So this is just, again, adding to policy what is already been, what is already the authority of the board to do.
This is just for information. However, board, if you look always at the top of the new policies, it will say policy code, so you know that's the policy that's going to go into the new manual. So, that's all we have for first reading, and if you have any questions, please, or comments, let the committee know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. All right. We are, we have pulled item B. Item C, budget update. Ms. Small?
Thank you. I'm going to briefly review PowerPoint to just discuss some of the changes since the board approved their original local request of the county commissioner. I'm going to skip through some of the information in order to save time, but we can certainly, this is not for approval. You won't, the board won't approve the budget resolution until July. So, starting on the second, or actually, third slide, please. The board of commissioners actually approved their budget yesterday, and they, it's slightly more than we were anticipating, so the reduction is $1,235,000 for an estimated per pupil funding of $2,907. There's also a reduction to capital outlay in the amount that we were anticipating for an appropriation of $1.6 million, $26,240, and keeping the pre-K grant the same. So those are the amounts that the county has approved that will be included in the budget resolution in July, but I did want to just walk you through the format of the presentation. If you have questions, you can certainly call me, and we can talk about it before July. The next slide just goes through the final amounts of the items on the ad list. I won't read through those, but those are the items that are recurring for the local budget. The second, wow, that color's really bright. That totals $1.4 million, $25,150. The second slide shows, the next slide, excuse me, shows the one-time appropriations of $440,000, and then the proposed increase in the local budget with the recurring and the one-time increases of 1.8. So those are our needs, and I just mentioned that there's a reduction, and so how to balance is on the following slide. Actually, there's one more, one more slide. Back up a little bit. This is the items that were on the ad list that we are going to try to absorb in state and federal increases that we're anticipating. So we do, we will be able with the state enrollment increase to cover the Porter's next staff, as we're opening that new school for the ones that don't, the staff members that don't move by ADM with the students. We have some carryover funding in our Title II grant that can help us with PD related to our middle school curriculum, and then we'll use state textbooks fund for that curriculum. The instructional support request, some of those items, we are moving into the CARES Act funding, which I'll discuss a little bit later. So those are the items that were on the original local ad list that we're moving to state and federal. The next slide shows a summary of kind of the net change in the current local budget. So we have the net change in our revenue of $23,000, because we're going to balance with a fund balance appropriation and an increase in fund balance appropriation. We have a recurring fund balance appropriation of $3 million, which is what we usually save with vacancy savings and that kind of thing. So this increase is for one year only. This is not a sustainable level of increase, but, you know, until we have a chance to sort of analyze all of the federal money that we're going to be receiving, we felt like this is a reasonable recommendation. We also have some budget cuts and some transfer from the charter reserve, because their enrollment was not as much as we had thought this past year. So with those, those changes, we believe that we can balance the budget included in the budget cuts, just real high level. We're looking at some reduction of vacant positions, taking six out of the teacher reserve, and we've eliminated three in our assistant principal allocations. We also have budgeted this much tighter with our salary, so any turnover savings, we are going ahead and reducing the budget line item. We've also reduced school allotments, not the actual formulas, but we had, our enrollment used to be higher, so we had a reserve, so we eliminated the reserve. So that's kind of, we also, any non-recurring expenses, we pulled out. So the budget is very tight, and so we'll have some work to do this coming year. The next slide is just a summary by purpose function of the budget. The thing I want to mention here is that the county did approve their budget resolution to include approval of our appropriation at the purpose function level. So this is the total fund to, and I'll bring to, when I bring the budget back to you, you'll see the portion that is to be county-funded. So any changes that we make between those purpose functions during the year, above 10% of any of those line items will have to go back to the county commissioners for approval. Next is capital outlay, and I'm not going to go through these slides, but I have noted where we made changes to balance capital outlay. Most of the reduction happened in technology, but we're also going to have some federal CARES funding to help offset some of that. So you can look through those line items. The next page slide shows repairs and renovations and the details for technology. We did not make any changes in vehicles, and just a slight reduction for custodial equipment. So that's the details that you can look through and call me if you have questions, and we'll certainly discuss, we can discuss that more in July. The last two slides show the education stabilization funding information that we have. We don't have it all, but you can look through that information, and you can kind of see a breakdown on, the application was received and due between these two board meetings, so we didn't have a chance to bring it to you for approval. We had to submit it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Small. All right, item nine, superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I will hold my report this evening for the June 16 interim meeting in the interest of time.
Thank you. Item 10, board chairperson's report. I have nothing at this time. Committee reports, we have had none. We don't have anything turned in. Item 12, consensus items. Item A, personnel.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I request your approval of the teacher contract renewals as presented. As a reminder, these are all one-year contract renewal recommendations based on a previous discussion and approval by the board for a one-year contract renewal, given the fact that we have not been able to complete observations and follow the evaluation process as designed due to the move away from school starting in March.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the teacher contract renewals?
Move to approve. This is Stephanie Adams.
There's a motion from Ms. Adams. Is there a second?
Second. Judy Justice.
Second for Ms. Justice. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's seven nothing.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the next item under personnel is the board report. I would ask your approval of the report as presented.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for hard-to-fill positions?
Madam Chair, this would be the board report of appointments, resignations, and terminations. The teacher contract renewal was a separate vote. It is omitted in terms of the separation. The personnel report is A, the teacher contract renewals is separate. I'd like for you to approve them separately.
Okay, which one am I on?
So this would be A, personnel.
A personnel.
It is not a separate item, 1, 2, 3, but it is personnel, the board report this evening.
Okay, am I on the wrong spot?
No, you're on the right spot. Instead of 1, 2, 3, it's A, 1, 2.
A, 1, 2.
And the personnel report is the board report.
Okay, all right. You have heard the motion, or you've heard the recommendation, excuse me. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the personnel report. This is Nichols.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second for Mr. Reivenbark. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Abstain. My wife is on that report.
All right. Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is six, nothing with one abstaining. How do you say that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Very good.
All right, so moving on to item B. Is that right?
We have number two under personnel. My apologies for the formatting confusion at the moment.
Yeah, okay.
So the personnel report.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was a little confused by this.
Personnel is the report. It should be one, contract renewals, two, hard to fill, three. But we'll certainly correct it.
Okay.
So for hard to fill positions, in order to be competitive with both private and public entities when hiring, it's requested that applicants selected to fill non-certified vacancies listed on the hard to fill position list that is attached receive a one-for-one outside work experience credit. This practice was recommended by the Compensation Review Ad Hoc Committee. Approval of the applicant selected to fill non-certified vacancies listed on the hard to fill position list will receive one-for-one outside work experience. The listing will be updated and approved each school year. I request approval of the list as presented.
All right, you have heard the recommendation. Now we're approving the hard to fill position recommendation.
Yes.
There we go. I'm on the right spot. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Mr. Boyer made the motion. Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
There's a second for Ms. Adams. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is seven, nothing. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, old business policies for second reading. Ms. Nichols?
Thank you. We have three policies tonight. First one is the old policy, Code of Essex, number 1240. And we looked at it during our policy committee meeting with the Board of Education, or the State Board of Education help. And I want to thank Mr. Boyer for joining the committee. We now have merged that information with policy 2120, the same Code of Essex title. So you've looked at this previously. If you have any questions, I'm sure Mrs. Stagner can explain how we merged the policy so that it's more clear. Any questions on that one? So we need to approve policy 2120, and then we need to rescind policy 1240. So let's start with the approval of 2120, Code of Essex.
All right, you've heard the recommendation.
Move to approve.
That was from Mr. Boyer. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reivenbark. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is seven, nothing.
Move to approve.
All right, is there a motion to rescind policy 1240? All right, is there a motion to rescind policy 1240?
So moved. Mr. Boyer.
Motion for Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
All right, Ms. Adams, you are the second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is seven, nothing.
Now, yes. We need a motion to rescind policy 1240.
All right, is there a motion to rescind policy 1240?
So moved. Mr. Boyer.
Motion for Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
All right, Ms. Adams, you are the second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It passed a seven, it passed a seven, nothing. Policy 1240 is rescinded.
The next policy is 4155, assignment to class. This one took a lot of thinking and including everything we could think of that would be an exception, and we do have to make an exception. So Mrs. Stagner, you want to share anything with this, about this policy?
Now, the policy committee considered it and tried to, included a new provision for the children of teachers. And so this, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it's fairly straightforward.
If we have no questions, then I ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Mr. Boyer.
Motion for Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
All right, Ms. Adams, you are the second. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It passed a seven, it passed a seven, nothing. Policy 1240 is rescinded.
The next policy is 4155, assignment to class. This one took a lot of thinking and including everything we could think of that would be an exception, and we do have to make an exception. So Mrs. Stagner, you want to share anything with this, about this policy?
Now, the policy committee considered it and tried to, included a new provision for the children of teachers. And so this, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it's fairly straightforward.
If we have no questions, then I ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Mr. Boyer.
Motion for Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reivenbark. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is seven, nothing to approve policy 4155.
Thank you. Policy 8432 is, was an existing policy. However, when Mrs. Stagner reviewed it, she realized that we brought to our attention that we had a requirement that's not a part of the state law. So that part was removed where we had to have proof of vaccination for a miniature horse and this use of service animals. But we have had this policy in place, and we do have procedures. And Dr. Burns, I'm sure you and your group will be getting those to, to the committee so that we can make sure that we have everything in place. So we need approval for this.
Actually, Ms. Nichols, I actually have worked with and have gotten some revised procedures to Dr. Burns, so those are ready. And as soon as the policy is approved, the procedures will be ready as well.
Oh, okay. Perfect. See? Good teamwork. Thank you. So now, Madam Chair, if we can get this policy approved, please.
All right, is there a motion to approve policy 8432 as revised?
Move to approve.
There's a motion for Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second. Stephanie Adams.
Second for Ms. Adams. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Reivenbark?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is seven, nothing to approve policy 8432.
And that concludes our policy.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols. Item B, high school 2020 graduation task force recommendations. Dr. Smith?
Madam Chairperson, board members, Dr. Burns, and members of the New Hanover County Schools, non-traditional high school and traditional high school task forces. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the recommendation regarding high school graduation ceremonies for the 2020 school year. I begin my presentation by thanking the members of these task forces. The student representatives worked diligently to ensure that the voices of their classmates were heard, using surveys and social media to connect. The task forces, which consisted of not only the senior class presidents and/or the student council presidents, included the principals of each school, senior class advisors, the district safety officer, and a representative from the Department of Public Health. The task forces met several times and received legal guidance regarding our recommendation from a representative from the law offices of Tharrington Smith. Additionally, in making our recommendations, we received the most recent governor's executive order, where we reviewed the most recent governor's executive order, and associated FAQ along with DPI's guidance on high school graduation ceremonies. Further, we contacted other districts regarding their graduation plans and were made aware of the plans of districts choosing to hold in-person graduations in excess of 25 people in an outside venue and 10 people in an indoor venue. Further, members of the task force were made aware of a Facebook group initiated to promote in-person graduations and a survey started to support in-person graduations. We realize that there are very strong emotions related to our high school graduations, and everyone wants the very best for our students and their families. It is likely there will be few other times in the lives of many of our students that is more momentous than that of their high school graduation. Our graduates have already lost so very much, with the loss of their proms, spring athletic seasons, award banquets, yearbook signings, and almost every high school tradition that they have looked forward to for the last four years. Many have been relegated to self-isolation and others only able to connect with their friends virtually. Knowing the significance of these losses, it was the goal of the task forces to find a way to ensure that even if we could not provide them with a traditional in-person graduation, we would honor our graduates in a way that allowed them to celebrate with family and friends their achievements and hard work for the last 13 years. I want to make very clear that the recommendations that will be shared with you tonight are the work of the task forces. They are not the work of any one individual presenting this evening. They are the recommendation coming from those task forces. So at this time, I would like to introduce Peyton Ramos, a senior at Isaac Bear High School, who is a member of our non-traditional, excuse me, non-traditional high school task force to talk about what high school graduation ceremonies for our non-traditional high schools would look like. And I do believe that Peyton is on the call.
So collectively, as the task force, we recommend either a drive-through or a drive-in ceremony for the non-traditional high schools. Both of these options comply with Governor Cooper's guidelines and enforce proper social distancing. Additionally, the task force suggests that the high schools have the opportunity to choose between these two main options. This will allow each ceremony to be unique and for the student body's voices to be heard. The first recommendation is a drive-through ceremony where the students will literally drive through an outdoor venue to receive or to phone them. In this case, the students are limited to the amount of guests that can safely fit in one vehicle. Afterwards, they can celebrate with their friends and family at their own risk and on their own time. Furthermore, the ceremony itself may be short just to prevent any unnecessary contact during this pandemic or traffic jam. Overall, this recommendation was the most cost-effective that the task force created. Next, the second recommendation is a drive-in ceremony. In this scenario, the non-traditional high schools will reserve a outdoor, an outdoor venue where they will host a drive-in graduation. In fact, the task force suggested using Cape Fear Community College's parking lots because they're set on an incline. Therefore, all the viewers can see a stage set up at the bottom of the lot. Again, just like the drive-through option, the guests will be limited to one vehicle and can celebrate freely after the ceremony. Furthermore, the entire ceremony will be broadcasted via the radio, just like a real drive-in theater. This will allow everyone to hear the speakers, and parents will be notified before their student gets to walk across the stage. Overall, this was the most popular recommendation created by the board. Finally, we offer a Finally, we offer a third, yet unpopular recommendation, just in case, which would be individualized ceremonies. Now, the non-traditional high schools do have a small graduating class. For instance, at Isaac Bear, my class is only 51 students total. So we know that these schools have the ability to host these individualized ceremonies that will not exceed 25 people outdoors. Again, the guests will actually be limited to only two per student this time, so we don't go past 25 people. Then, the graduating class will be divided into groups and given a specific time slot to graduate. And if possible, we would like to livestream it over YouTube so extended family and friends can watch in real time as the students walk across the stage and speak. Ultimately, this was the most time-consuming recommendation created by the board. I'd like to wrap this up just by reminding the board that some of my peers, they will be the first in their families to receive a diploma. And we want to honor that as a student body. However, we do understand that these restrictions are meant to protect us and we would hate to exclude anyone from a traditional ceremony if they have an autoimmune disorder or anything else preventing them from coming. I find it quite fitting that the non-traditional high schools will have to have a non-traditional graduation.
Like that. Thank you, Peyton. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Emma Claire List and Gillian Lancaster, both seniors at Hogard High School, who are members of the Traditional High School Task Force, who will talk to you about what the traditional high school graduation ceremonies for traditional high schools would look like. And there's also a PowerPoint presentation. If we could bring that up for those young ladies? And Emma and Gillian, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
So we would like to first start off by stating that we understand many county school boards in North Carolina have interpreted Governor Cooper's guidelines differently and have chosen to have in-person traditional graduations with social distancing. However, New Hanover County leaders and advisors have instructed us and guided us to present a recommendation which abides by the governor's rule, that there be no more than 25 people at a mass gathering in an outdoor setting.
Which leads us to Option A, which will commence no later than June 19th. This is a drive-in graduation, which will be held flexible for individual school design. And here is a possible outline of what this would look like. Graduates and their family arrive at the venue in a vehicle together and park in their assigned parking spot. Each graduate will be allowed one vehicle. A stage will have been set up at the front of the venue. After all of the graduates have arrived, speeches commence and will be broadcasted by radio, so every vehicle can hear clearly. Jumbotron's may be set up so that those towards the back of the venue can see the stage clearly. When it is time for the graduates to walk, small groups of vehicles will drive to the side of the stage when they are notified to do so, and the graduates will exit their vehicles. Then, graduates will walk the stage, receive their diplomas, and return to their vehicle and parking spot. After all the graduates have walked, graduates may once again exit their vehicles to turn their tassels. The task force recognizes that not all families may have access to a vehicle. We have discussed two options for how to accommodate these families, lending out drivers' education vehicles and/or establishing a partnership with enterprise car rentals. Additionally, we recognize that for some schools, there may not be a venue large enough to hold a drive-in graduation for all graduates at once. In the circumstance that a venue with a large enough capacity is not found, individual schools may opt to hold multiple drive-in ceremonies with smaller groups of graduates.
And that brings us to Option B, which would also commence no later than the week of June 19th, or, excuse me, by the date of June 19th. This would be a drive-through graduation, which will be flexible for individual school design. Here's a possible outline of what this would look like. Graduates will drive in small groups to a venue at an assigned time and will be greeted by staff from their school. A stage will have been set up at the front of the venue. Graduates will then walk the stage, receive their diplomas, and return to their vehicle and exit the venue. Individual schools may opt to compile videos of all graduates walking into a larger video for graduates and families to watch after the event. Additionally, the way speeches are presented may vary depending on the individual school. They may opt to send a pre-recorded version to graduates virtually, present a pre-recorded video to the small groups of graduates when it is their time to come to the venue, or include the videos of the speeches in the larger video of all the graduates walking.
We want to let it be known that the task force did not make this decision without the help of the New Hanover County seniors. Many senior class presidents and senior class advisors on the force reached out to their class to gather student opinion on their graduation ceremony through social media and by word of mouth. For example, in polls which were posted on our Hogard Student Council Instagram, the majority of students voiced that they would prefer a graduation that was anything but virtual. Students from other schools in the county echoed this opinion. Therefore, the force did all that we could in order to recommend that a graduation be in-person. We would like to acknowledge the efforts of parents and students to advocate for a traditional in-person graduation. We want to ensure the public that the social media campaigns and petitions were taken into account when making our decision. One petition that was started after hearing rumors of this recommendation, titled "Save in-person graduations for our New Hanover County seniors", amassed 2,000 signatures. However, in order to comply with guidance, we are unable to recommend such a graduation, but sincerely believe that a drive-in graduation is the next best option.
The ultimate goal of the task force was to recommend the most personal graduation possible, all the while ensuring the safety of students and their families. Just like many students and families in New Hanover County, we sincerely hoped that we could recommend a version of the traditional in-person graduation. However, after receiving guidance from the North Carolina Governor, New Hanover County Schools Director of Safety, and New Hanover County Public Health Services Manager, it became clear to us that a traditional in-person graduation that followed the guidelines would be unfeasible. In order to comply with the governor's executive order and legal guidance presented to us, ceremonies would only be able to have seven graduates each in order to allow for parents and staff to be present. For Hogard High School, this equates to 63 different ceremonies. Larger schools such as Laney High School would have an even greater number of ceremonies. Therefore, after much deliberation, it was decided that this option was unfeasible and was taken off the table. The task force decided that a drive-in graduation would be the next best thing in order to give graduates the opportunity to walk the stage and watch their peers graduate. A drive-in will also potentially allow more guests to be present per graduate, since graduates will each be allowed one vehicle and may bring as many guests as their vehicle can fit. However, if an individual school determines that the drive-in option is not feasible, they may choose to pursue the drive-through option in order to still give students an in-person graduation experience.
Thank you, Emma Claire and Gillian. I cannot thank these students enough and all the students from both task forces for their contributions and hard work to bring this recommendation forth. The recommendation for each task force is as follows. The Non-Traditional High School Graduation Task Force recommends the following options for students of Isaac Bear Early College High School, Wilmington Early College High School, and Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Drive-in, drive-through, in-person, with no more than 10 people present for indoor and no more than 25 people present for outdoor ceremonies. Each school will select their graduation option based on the venue and incorporate elements of each of the acceptable options while adhering to all social distancing requirements and mass gathering restrictions. Graduations would occur no later than June 19th. The Traditional High School Graduation Task Force recommends the drive-in and drive-through graduation options for students of Laney High School, Ashley High School, New Hanover High School, and Hogard High School. Each school will customize an approved graduation option while adhering to all social distancing requirements and mass gathering restrictions. Graduations would occur no later than June 19th. And at this time, I would ask the board's approval of the graduation options as presented.
All right. The board, you've heard the recommendations. Are there any questions?
No questions, but I would like to commend all three of the young ladies that presented tonight. You did an amazing job and thank you for the work, for the whole task force. Thank you for the work that you've done. But for the three of you representing our high schools, you did a phenomenal job and your voices are heard. Thank you.
And I would like to thank all of the people involved with this. This has been a very difficult situation we've been going through. And I know that everybody's doing sincerely their best job. I really appreciated how thorough the information that you brought to us tonight. It made it possible to see that there are ways to do things that I think is compromise and safety. So thank you very much for doing what you've done.
And I'll echo that. These are exceptional times and you three young ladies definitely rose to them. Very impressive. Thank you very much.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the recommendation as presented.
Move to approve the recommendation. Stephanie Adams.
A motion for Ms. Adams. Is there a second?
Nelson Bowyer, my second.
There's a second for Mr. Bowyer. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Ms. Eastep, before we take a vote, I'd like to have a discussion.
Okay.
Now that we have a motion on the table, now I believe is the appropriate time to have a discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
That is, I think that is the process. First of all, I would certainly like to thank the students that were on the task force and all their work that they did. Clearly, they spent a lot of time thinking about it, making some tough decisions based on the guidance that they were given from administration and our legal representatives. And based on that guidance, which I believe is flawed, they had to make tough decisions. We have, I mean, we have a jurisdiction that connects to our borders that has found the exact opposite of what our guidance has found and what our legal guidance has given our students. And there are multiple jurisdictions, including jurisdictions that are actually having outdoor ceremonies right now. So to say that they're not able or are not allowed is contrary to what's actually going on. And with that, I would make a substitute motion. I know I sent it out to the board, I believe, on Thursday. No one responded to it. But I would make a substitute motion at this time. And I can read my motion. I think everyone hopefully has read it. But it is to actually hold traditional graduations in a way that are safe and a way that have, other jurisdictions have done them and are doing them at this time. And I believe that if we as a board decide to do that, law enforcement will support us and public health will do everything they can to assist us as well. So my motion would be to hold a traditional graduation at each one of the high school football fields. Secondly, there would be two high school graduations. You would divide the classes in half. The first graduation would start at 9:00 a.m. on 6/13. You would have A through M students. And you would have a second graduation starting at 1:00 p.m. N through Z students. There would be a strict limit on students having two guests. Students would actually sit on the football field in chairs that were six feet apart, according to CDC guidance. Parents would be, or guests would be in units of two. Those units of two would be more than six feet apart, sitting in the bleachers of both the visitors and the home stadium. So the most people we would have at our biggest law, at our biggest high school in one stadium at one time would be half of Laney's graduating class, which would be approximately 225 students, times two people. So you're looking at 450, so 675 guests plus any administration that would be there. Our football fields are, can easily accommodate that, maintain social distancing, and have a traditional graduation. We would require everyone to wear masks. If you did not wear a mask, you would be asked to leave by law enforcement. And we would have law enforcement help assist with that. We could have temperature stations. So instead of having, you know, one or two individual lines, have seven or eight individual lines. We could contact the county to see if there was, the Department of Health could assist with that. If you had a temperature above 100.4 degrees, you would be asked to leave. And again, that's in guidance with CDC guidelines. What, during the changeover of both graduations, we could wipe down, wipe down the chairs. The reason why I bring these, it is very easy to provide as safe as a traditional graduation as possible. And simply discounting it because, because the committee was told they can't do it flies squarely in the face of the facts that there are actually jurisdictions that are doing it. So you actually can do it. So I would make a substitute motion at this time to approve a graduation for the traditional high schools that is held on those football fields.
I'll second.
Are we having a discussion still?
Ms. Stagner?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Ms. Stagner. We do have a motion on the floor already. What do we do with that motion?
Well, there would need to be a motion, a vote to, whether or not to consider the substitute to start with.
We're still discussing this, aren't we?
Yes, sure.
Okay. This is extremely difficult. But there's absolutely no way we're going to have any traditional graduation. Both of the suggestions, except for the vehicles or setting in bleachers, seems to be the main difference. At this point, safety, and I think this is why the task force, in fact, I know it is, we're taking that into considerations. One way is safer than the other. Also would involve less, I guess, wiping down and concern. People are, I've been to, oh my gosh. All through the 90s, I was part of putting graduations together. I've had my kids graduate. I've graduated several times myself. I know how important this is. But we can't have a traditional graduation. We can have modified versions. And to me, it seems like the most important thing is to have a modified version that is safe. Today, we had 11 new cases in the last 24 hours. That's considerably up. Our numbers are increasing. I am very concerned what's going to happen in a week or two. So anything we can do to mitigate this, because our kids are precious and their families are precious. And people need to stay safe. And we're not going to have a traditional graduation. No matter what you're calling it from any direction, it's not going to happen. So we got to have the safest graduation. So that's my point of this discussion. They need, you know, we need to take that in consideration above all other things.
As I echo what Ms. Justice has to say, you know, as I mentioned during our mid-month meeting, this is heartbreaking. And I understand our seniors have absolutely had so much stolen from them this year. And that's awful. And this situation is terrible for everyone. But at the end of the day, we are responsible, if it is a New Hanover County Schools event, we are responsible for the health and safety of every student and every family member that attends. And I have people in my life who have lost people to COVID and it was the most horrendous thing, saying goodbye to someone on an iPad as they take their last breath. I've lost my father and when he died, I was sitting next to him, holding his hand. And that made things better for me. And knowing that I have people in my life that have experienced it, if you look around the country and in areas that have been harder hit, we've been very lucky in North Carolina that we have not had huge outbreaks to this point. But if you look around the country, anywhere that has been hard hit, this discussion isn't even happening. Virtual is the only hard hit, this discussion isn't even happening. Virtual is the only option in other places because they have been, they've been affected, they have seen it, and people have lost their lives. I cannot, I cannot in good conscience stand up for a traditional graduation where one of our students or one of their family members could end up losing their life because they attended one of our events. And I hate it for the seniors, and my heart goes out to you. But this is our responsibility as leaders of this district to make the best decisions for all of our kids and their families in this situation.
Stephanie, I was sitting with my mother when she died, holding her hand. And I know how you feel. But I also know how all the parents and kids feel that are not going to get to share in graduation. And I want to just go ahead and apologize to all of them that are watching right now. I am so sorry that we could not do this. And I'm not talking to you two. I'm just saying, I'm embarrassed and I'm sorry. And I did the best I could. And that's all I got to say.
And I would say, I mean, it's easy to say a lot of these things and kind of use scare tactics as justification for not doing this. But when we say that, you know, places around the country that have the big outbreak aren't even talking to it, that's not true. New Jersey's actually having it. That was one of the biggest outbreaks in the country originally in New Jersey. They're actually doing these on football fields. So, to use rhetoric to do that kind of stuff and trying to justify not voting for this, I just find it a little bit disingenuous. Because that's, a lot of those things actually fly squarely in the face of the actual facts. I think there's been one known case of transmission outside in the Hanover County, which means being outside is one of the safest places. You know, we have grocery stores open. We have Walmart open. We have all these essential businesses that are open. What we would do on a football field puts anything those people are doing to shame. We're masks, temperatures, everyone's six feet apart. So, just simply saying it's a bad disease and we can't do it, and I'm sorry, I just think those, when you say that and use that type of rhetoric, it really kind of detracts of what we're trying to do. Of course, we're trying to be safe. That is, that is the goal of not having a traditional graduation in Trask Coliseum, which obviously is not an option. But there are other options other than sitting in a car and watching people. And the task force wasn't given the opportunity to consider those, those options, which is really disappointing. You have a vast majority, including the poll that I believe I emailed to everyone today that shows over 2,000 signatures, asking for a graduation on a football field. That's what they want. Yes, we are to provide safe, make sure that people are safe at the Hanover County Schools events. But we are also elected to enforce the will of the people. And I believe the will of the people is extremely strong in having these graduations on the football field. And voting against having that, it's not what the community wants. And that is our responsibility.
Could I, could I please, excuse me, could I please get, we've got Chief Deputy Sarvis here, and I want him to take a moment to speak to what the Sheriff's Department is prepared to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and the board. We of the Sheriff's Department, depending on what the governing board here decides tonight, we will support whatever your decision is. We want you to know that as a Sheriff's Office. One of the things that I do have questions about for the board is to consider who will be taking these temperatures? Who will be enforcing? Will it be a regulation from the board about mask wearing? Because that is a recommendation. And that is not something that the Sheriff's Office has been enforcing because it is not, it's a recommendation. And we do not enforce recommendations. So, I would put that back on the board to consider that. And as far as the six-foot distancing, I would also put that back on the board as far as how would you deal with that. The Sheriff's Office' main responsibility is security and safety at any school event. And whatever direction you go, we will be there ingress, egress, helping with traffic, being there to support in a support role. But as far as the enforcement side of temperature checks, mask wearing, stuff like that, I want to be very clear, the Sheriff's Office is not going to get involved with that aspect of it. But we will be there to support in whatever this governing board decides tonight.
Thank you.
So, if we handle the mask and the temperature checks, does that make any difference?
I don't really see, I mean, they're going to be setting in a football stadium, feet and feet apart, a whole bunch of kids, feet and feet apart on the field. You can be in a car. Neither one of these are traditional. And so, try, I mean, I was, I'm a little surprised that this version of traditional is being promoted as traditional, and none of this is traditional. And so, the safest way, in my opinion, would, especially with all this expert advice, even though some people apparently disagree with science, but that's okay, that if we're going to do it, do it the safest way possible because this is not going to be traditional. There's no way it's going to be traditional.
And Phil, to your, to your question, you know, would be, would we be responsible for masks and temperature checks? Who's "we"? Do we put that on our staff and our administration? I don't want to put them at risk.
Right.
This is, I, it's just an impossible situation.
I really wanted to get the yes on this. And at the end of the day, I don't know how I justify substitute in my judgment over the judgment of the Health Department and the judgment of our legal counsel. Ms. Stagner, can you speak to liability? I mean, I know we've talked about waivers or something like that, but is there a liability issue here for the board if somebody gets sick at one of these events?
So, I do want to just clarify that at no time was the task force told that they could not consider, you know, the traditional ceremonies. I think Dr. Smith left the discussion open. And what she asked for was, was the best guidance from the Health Department, from the safety officers, and from, from myself. And my guidance was that the governor's, the governor's clarification of his executive order said that he did not intend to exempt graduation ceremonies from the mass gathering restriction. Now, whether a court of law would ultimately find that his intention does or does not override what the letter of the executive order said is something I can speculate about, but I don't have a clear answer for that. At best, we have conflicting guidance from the, from the state. But what we do have is clearly an intention for the governor not to exempt graduations. We have guidance from the Health Department and state and local that in-person graduations are not the safest, they're not recommended. And it would, it would be foolhardy for me to advise the board that there's no risk and that there's no potential liability. Because I think that that is certainly something that, that has to be taken into account when you have a safety concern. And so, what my guidance is, is that there certainly is some risk of liability if someone should get sick. That's not the overriding concern. I think I'm, I'm hearing from board members that safety is the overriding concern. And I think that's what the task force considers.
How would you know that someone got sick from the graduation? And I just want a straight answer. How would you know somebody got sick from the graduation?
Well, there's certainly, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a healthcare or a public health professional, but there's certainly contact tracing that can be done. And whether or not, I think the question is from a legal standpoint, what is a, what is a reasonable standard of care?
Mm-hmm.
Could I ask Mr. Wortman a question, please?
Can I, can I follow up?
Yes, please.
Ms. Stagner, you mentioned that, you know, the liability. And I know that from who I've talked to, that liability was a, when that was discussed, kind of took the graduation of the football field off the table. Because it scared some people into doing that. When you had that conversation about liability, did you explain to them that, that A, a school has insurance, and B, liability for a school is a lot different than a liability for my private business, financially speaking? Did y'all have that? Did y'all have that conversation?
We did not get into that level of detail about liability.
Because from financially, the school would not, probably would not have any financial liability, correct?
I can't say that. I don't know what the, the school board's insurance would or would not, would not cover.
And we're talking about people's health. My sister had a scare two weeks ago. And she was on a ventilator in ICU. They thought she had COVID. And she's got health risks. Her husband couldn't see her. I couldn't see her. My nephew couldn't see her. Thank God, it wasn't COVID, although it is a bad health concern. It's heartbreaking. It's rough. It's really hard. So, you know, it's not just a matter of liability. We're responsible here. I mean, if there's any way, shape, or form, we could be responsible for somebody to get ill. This is not something I want to take on.
Mr. Wortman, have you had a chance to speak with the high school principals?
I have, I have talked to some of the high school principals, yes.
And were they open to your recommendation?
Absolutely.
And I talked to the people at the Health Department, and they told, they told me that if we did all the things that we said they were, that we were going to do, that it would probably be one of the safest places in Wilmington to be. I don't know what else to do. I mean, if you're just not going to vote for it, you're not going to vote for it. But I am very disappointed.
And just to be clear, I actually reached out, I think before the task force did. I reached out to Pitt County and spoke to their board chair for about 30 minutes about how they were doing it. Because I was really interested. I was disappointed that we hadn't reached out before. But I thought that it was important to at least figure out how they're doing it and how we can incorporate that into something that we're doing. I talked to them for a while, and they talked to me that, they talked about the board made the decision, and after the decision was made, they worked with county health and with the Sheriff's Office in making sure that it was safest possible graduation. And I believe they're actually in the middle of having their graduations. And they were not, I know we had had a discussion about them holding them on ECU's football field. They were actually at their local high school football fields. So, they're doing very, something very similar that I'm proposing. And fortunately for Pitt County, they had, I believe they had a school board that listened to their community and made that decision. And I was hopeful that we would, we would be able to do that as well.
There's 240,000 people in this community. 2,000 is substantial. But we can't say for sure that that's true, that it's the entire community. Or, we don't know for sure. We don't. So, that, making that as a reasonable assumption isn't possible.
I received 18 emails, 18 emails about this. And you're saying the community being represented, 18 emails, one from a student, the rest were from parents. And those are my numbers. I don't know how many you've received, David, but...
I guess I had assumed that you had read the emails that I sent, including the survey that had 2,000 signatures on it today. That was, I sent that, I received that, I think this afternoon. And I know that it was forwarded out. I believe it's on the link somewhere as well. But I think even in the responses, it was overwhelming for the students, for the seniors, that they wanted a traditional, as traditional of a graduation as possible. And I think putting it on a football field is by far the most traditional that we can make the graduation, as well as make it one of the most safest places to be.
Well, long before you people came about, 67 years ago, I graduated from New Hanover High School at Legion Stadium. We were outside, but we weren't limited in numbers. I think we can do it if we really get the cooperation from all the agencies and certainly the schools. But then they can make a choice. Do they want Mr. Wortman's recommendation? Or do they want the recommendation from the action group? Could we not do it that way? Let them make a decision?
I'm too concerned about the safety.
Well, you know, I've been home most of the time.
As I have.
And I'm concerned too. But there comes a point where we all take a risk. Certainly, they've been taking a risk at nighttime in town.
That's, we're not responsible for other people. We're responsible for this. We're...
We're actually not responsible for all, for these people. We're providing a choice. It's the most important thing, providing a choice. If people are high-risk, we don't want them to come. Because we don't want them to get sick. You know, if they're, same thing, if they're elderly, same thing. We, we, let's provide alternatives to graduation by live streaming it on one of our, one of our channels. There are alternatives. It's not about forcing someone to go on graduation. That's not what this is at all. It's about giving a choice. And I think that's what people want. I know that's what people want.
Almost have more choices when you use the drive, the vehicle situation. You can have more guests. If the weather turns out to be bad, I saw the videos from Pitt and other places. I had the same emails we all have. And I was really, that's, that's not traditional. Trying to call this traditional that groups are pushing for, there are higher safety factors than what this task force is suggesting. To me, is like comparing apples and oranges. Neither one of them are traditional graduations. The safest one is the one that matters. And the health, the science people, the community leaders, I hate to say this, 2,000 people, 18 emails. I know a lot, I know these kids want a traditional, so do their families. But a lot of them don't. And they're not speaking out, they're not.
Board, I appreciate the discussion, but we are getting very close to the time. So, I think according to Ms. Stagner, we need to take a vote on the substitute motion. So, if we could do that at this time?
About whether or not to allow it's...
So, I'm going to ask for a vote on whether to accept the substitute motion. And Ms. Stagner, what, if we accept the substitute motion, that just means that then that one's, that's the motion that stands? Is that correct?
Then, then there, there would be a vote or a discussion on the substitute. And although it sounds like there's already been some, but the vote would be then to vote up or down on the substitute motion if it's substituted for the main motion.
Okay. So, is there, do I have to have, is there a motion to accept the substitute motion?
I'm making the motion.
Can, can Ms. Stagner, can Mr. Wortman make a motion to accept his own motion?
So, so there's been a motion to, for substitute and a second of that. So, I think there just needs to be a call of the vote whether or not to substitute the motion.
Okay. So, I'm a little lost here. So, what do I, so I'm calling the vote?
Just call a vote on whether or not to accept the substitute motion, or whether to substitute the motion.
So, what am I doing?
You're going to ask for a vote to accept the substitute motion.
Okay. So, I take, I vote all seven? I ask all seven?
Yes. And then if there, if that is accepted, then there's discussion and a vote on the substitute.
Okay. All right. So, Ms. Adams, do you vote to accept the substitute motion?
No.
Mr. Bullier?
I'm sorry, but no.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Nichols?
I accept it.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Avonbar?
Yes.
Mr. Wortman?
Yes.
And I vote no. So, the motion fails.
Disappointing.
4-3. And so, do we go back to the recommendation?
Yes, the main motion.
Okay. So, we're back to the main motion. And we did have a motion, we had a, a motion and a second. Ms. Adams, let's start this from the top again. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Oh.
Mr. Avonbar?
No.
Mr. Wortman?
Uh.
And I vote yes. It passes 4-3.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have a number of items of new business left. Looking at staff, we are at 8:15. Is there... Is there, are these items such that we can carry them forward to the interim meeting? The answer is yes, so if, if it is accepted by the board, we will pull the remaining items as well and bring them to the June 16th meeting for consideration.
All right. So do we need a, a motion to that effect, or just we can...
I, I will, I will just pull them at this point.
Okay, so those are tabled?
Yes, we'll pull.
Okay, those are pulled. All right, so then we're on to item 15. Is there any correspondence from any board member? And announcements, we do need an interim meeting, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, June 16th would be the third Tuesday.
So board members, please be on the lookout for that notification for an interim meeting on the 16th, and we also need to schedule the Cape Fear Community College interviews, and we will be getting that notification out as well. We do not need a closed session. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion for Mr. Boyer, is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Second for Ms. Adams. Ms. Adams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Mr. Wortman? I vote aye, 6-0, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.